All right, welcome to our special call meeting. We're going to have a moment of silent prayer followed by the pledge of allegiance. If you would, please stand with me. Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Amen. All right, next item is adoption of the agenda. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Or adopt, whether. Is there a second?
Second.
All right, those in favor, aye. Opposed, issue unanimous.
Mr. Chairman, who made the second?
I'm sorry?
Who made the second?
I did.
Commissioner Hamburg.
Thank you.
Madam Clerk, first item is DOAA 2021 sales ratio study appeal request. Mr. George.
Good afternoon. Thank you for coming together. Just wanted to go over the Department of Audit's sales ratio study we received back on the Fourth of August and to present some items that I wish, because the either Board of Commissioners or Board of Education has to approve this to appeal. So I want to go over a couple things here. So we received this on the Fourth. The county was given an overall ratio of 3755, which is well within the Department of Revenue's guidelines of 36 to 44 sales ratio. One of the things, though, that we've looked at with this sales ratio study, it takes just a sample of our sales for the year. So they used 1,085 of our sales, which we had a total of over 4,500. So as you take samples, sometimes it can misconstrue the overall totality of the numbers. Looking at it, our sales ratio study for the residential side was 35.75, and when I looked at our overall of just over 4,500 total sales, we were at about a 3803. The reason I'm coming before is as we are below the 38 threshold, it affects a couple things. It affects both the assessment ratio we can send out for public utility bills later this year. It also does have some effect on the Board of Education as far as some of their QBE money. I'm speaking more to what's going on with as far as public utilities. So what I've done is kind of work up some different information I just want to show and express. So some of the discrepancies here, when the Department of Audit obtains our CAMA files, they do it in late February, early March. As you know, we're still not sending our assessment notice until that last week in April. So we're still working on everything. I'm sorry, Ms. Hamburg.
What's the CAMA?
CAMA, that is our computer-assisted mass appraisal. Basically, it's all of our data that comes out and generates the values that we put in for assessment notices. So these CAMA files, when they take this information, it's a work in progress and it's usually at an early state. We're still getting sales in, usually it's three to, usually by mid to late March before we get all the sales in for the previous year. So as we're getting this information in, they're using information that has not been completed for our assessment notice mail-out. In May, they do send us the copy of the samples. We got a copy of that. We start then perusing through there and deciding what sales need to be disqualified. Some are, end up being related sales, some of them actually have ended up selling two or three times in the year. Others, the ratio aren't right, which is primarily a ton of ours because of when they take the sales data. We sent back over 350 of the samples that we wish to either be disqualified or adjusted. We sent along all the different information of why we believe that, whether it be for disqualified purpose or for adjustments to the ratio that they had compared to where we actually locked down for assessment notices.
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Chair of the IT, I've got citizens saying that the meeting is not online. Just wanted to make sure y'all are aware of that. I apologize. They're blingin' my phone off the hook.
I'll pause.
I apologize.
No, no, ma'am, no, ma'am.
No, please continue on.
Okay. So as I was kind of saying, some of the reasons for discrepancy is when they take this data compared to when we're completion, and we're not the only county. I'll show you in a minute how many counties are actually involved in this, especially this year. The Department of Audit applies a time adjustment. Basically, they look at the sales of when they happened in the year. They've got a formula and go about applying a time adjustment to our sales to try to equalize the year for their study. And so they applied approximately a 14, from what I've calculated, Mr. Thomas at the Department of Audit is traveling today and was not able to return my phone call from Monday until today. So he's going to give me the information, but from what we've calculated, approximately they gave us about a 14.5% time adjustment for the year. When I look at everything that we have internally, you know, I made a presentation that some of the median sales actually increased during that time, from 2021 actually increased over 47%. That's the median price. Our market adjustments internally, as far as adjusting each of these neighborhoods, on an average, went up almost 19.9%, right at 20%. So we were looking at more or less that the time adjustment that they gave us, their calculations are off. It just doesn't make sense to give us 14.5. I can't find anything in just taking the sales that they used and also our totality of sales that would warrant 14.5 if they would choose to go that way. We've given them other options as far as giving them the final numbers, but they chose to make time adjustments as they usually do.
Chairman, I have a question.
Yes, sir.
The time adjustment, what is that factored for?
So what the Department of Audit is looking at is equalization of our sales ratio. And when I say that, they're looking at, Department of Revenue looks at the previous year, and that's how we go about looking at it, because we have to value the properties every year as of January 1. In 2010, when Senate Bill 346 came about, it kind of then took the Department of Audit's, had to go a different route, because if we value every house as of January 1, Senate Bill 346 basically was passed and stated that if we have your home valued higher than the sales price, that next year you get it. We match that sale for one year. That's what Senate Bill 346 is. It's basically the match sale law, as it's kind of commonly referred to. What this would do is then take into account that basically we're always at a 40 ratio if you look at it after January 1, because we're matching the sales. So what Department of Audit's did is instead of the look-behind study that has been done for years and years and years and how Department of Revenue does it, we now have a look-forward study that we have to go through. I believe back in 2013, 14, in there, we also had another issue as the market was in a different state at that time, coming off of the crash, that we had some issues at that time with this look-forward study. But what the look-forward study is, they look at the first three to six months of the year that we're not even considering anymore, along with the sales of that previous year. So we're being sometimes held accountable for sales that we're not adjusting yet because we're not at that point. So that's also where discrepancies come for many years. And so a lot of the counties who have seen major increases, Metro Atlanta, up and down the, in the North Georgia mountains, along the coast, things like that, because they've seen more substantial growth than some of the other counties, a standard time adjustment on a county sometimes isn't, and works. I was up in Hall County last week talking to, there was about 50 chief appraisers, and we were getting together about this particular subject, and a lot of the counties locally are kind of in the same one. Hall County very much mimics some of the things that we've got going on. They saw a 20, 25% increase and only receiving about a 12 to 14% time adjustment, and so it's putting them right below that 38 threshold.
Hold on a second.
Yes, I'm sorry.
So these changes we see on here?
I'm gonna, yes, ma'am. What I'm gonna do is, what I'm, those few pages, I gave you a sample pages of just some of the ones that are sub-32 ratios.
So are these changes?
The what you see that I've-
The ratios that we made or the revenue?
So the ones that, the ratio study that you see in the hard numbers there is what the Department of Audit's is still basing it on, plus a time adjustment. What we're sent, what we sent them, the 350-plus sales that we asked them to look at, is the bottom number is what the ratio ended up being for assessment notices. Now, anything that was over 40 was, of course, matched, but we're not using that. We're using the overall true ratio at that time. So we're letting them know that all these ratios that were sub-32, we've already shown you once, were above, easily above 34, 35, 36 for the most part, and this is across 38 pages. I just gave you a sampling of four pages.
So we sent this to them already?
We sent that to them originally in May, and then they sent back this as a part of our final study, and what they've done is they've left our ratios and they've just applied the 14.5% sales adjustment, time adjustment, and that just isn't adequate. And that's where we want to show that, you know, that along with what we sent in, why isn't this data being looked at and given our true, what we locked down to send out assessment notices, because that's what we're supposed to be graded on. Basically, one of the lot of things we're talking about on this slide is the overall number of samples. They're taking 25%. I know supposedly the computer generates, it takes the list of all the sales they have at the time, and it tells them to pick this number, this number, this number, this number, this number. But at the same time, you know, we run into, you're using 25% of our sales and also you're using them at a time that we haven't even made the adjustments. Why can't, when we send everything back to you in May, after everything's locked down, you use the actual final numbers? That's what we're asking on that.
But suspended. I'm sorry.
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Franklin.
I was just gonna piggyback on Madam Vice Chair, because I think the question that she posed is definitely poignant. So you stated in the answer back that you've already submitted this information?
Yes, ma'am.
Once the adjustments were made.
Yes, ma'am.
But now we're back here again.
So we submitted it as part of our, you know, hey, this is why these were at this time, you know, our ratios ended up being finally, you know, at the final numbers we're at. What we were told was, instead of looking at that, and this is what they've done for the last few years, and most of the time, from what I gather from the meeting that I had last week, is most counties end up still above the 38, so no one really questions it because it's, as one person put it, a no harm, no foul. And I don't like that. You know, this is what we're trying to get going forward, is for them to start looking at what we send them back without this time adjustment. The time adjustment is very subjective, and it's not, I mean, it's based on the 25% of our sales study. Why not base it on the whole if that's the case? Because they've got our whole entire file. I understand they need to do samples. That's, the study is a sample size, I get that. But if they're gonna make time adjustments, why not look at our totality, because that's gonna reflect everything? I still couldn't get my 14.5 to come out with their sample size either. It was still coming out over 17. So that's where I also have questions about it. But when it comes to why we're back here is, they wanted to, they just want to apply the time adjustment. So they're leaving all of our numbers the same from back before adjustments and just taking a blanket time adjustment to the, depending on what time of the year the sale happened. And that's their version of equalizing.
So when you ask that, you said, why don't they take all of it? So you're saying in other counties, they take all of it?
No, ma'am, no, ma'am. Every county, every county has a sample size.
I hear your argument, but that's kind of a huge push and a huge ask.
No, it is.
Unless we get the state representative.
But that's why a lot of us are coming together now to, because, you know, this affects everything. This affects a lot of different aspects, and for something to be done semi-haphazard is a question that we want to raise as part of why myself, I know right now even speaking to, and I have to keep looking down for Mr. Thomas's name, I keep forgetting it, Lee Thomas at Department of Audit, he's over the sales ratio department. I was actually, when I was talking to him this morning, he's already expressed that on average he has five to 10 a year. He's got over 25 currently, and I told him that there was about 45 or 50 of us that met last week, and he's probably gonna get more. And so he kind of, from the one or two counties that have already had some minor talks with him, and from my talk this morning, actually about nine o'clock this morning I talked to him, this seems like a pretty easy process to go in and explain our thing, but we've got to go through the formality of appealing it to show them this information on a one-on-one basis. But as we've all kind of discussed, as we get this one-on-one discussion with them, we want to have a greater discussion of going forward, we don't have to have these issues. Let's go about going and looking at truly what each county's sending you, and maybe it's time for them to adjust, you know, where they need to pull more sample size, you know, so that's part of the greater discussion this is gonna be. What I've done here is just kind of given you an idea of the public utility information. So right now, this study, they have our overall public utility 100% value at $858 million. I'm not gonna go into little other parts, but $858 million. So if we assess, if we were above a 38 ratio, and like I said, we're only .45 off, then we can bill out the public utilities at a 40%. So that would be a little over $343 million. If our ratio stays at 3755, basically, we can bill out an assessment level at that 3755, and that would be $322 plus million. So that's a difference of $21 million of assessed value. That's why I'm here, to ask for that, you know. But that's just something that, especially with given all the information that we sent in, we should not be .45 off, just should not be. I am making a mention, I don't know the actual breakdown of how the QBE money for the Board of Education works. Ms. Anderson, you might could speak to a little bit more about that, but this also makes a huge difference on that end, too. What I was kind of going about is telling you what our office intends to prove, is that the final sales ratio, what we provided back to them in those 350 that we sent back to them, these final ratios were not right. What we locked down for digest was not what we're being graded on, on here. And so why do a time adjustment if we've given you those numbers or can give you the updated CAMA file? I understand that they've got to do things by a certain time, but why can't, when they start sending these back out, we can send them another additional CAMA file, and then they can update their numbers and make a thing? That's my suggestion, it's gonna be my suggestion to Mr. Thomas, you know, and I've brought it to the attention of a couple others that are with Department of Audit's, who actually, one of our auditors has handled it.
So those will be actual numbers?
These, so, yes, sir. What I want to give them is the actual factual numbers that went out for assessment notices. That's what this is supposed to be graded on. Okay, I guess that was it. What I wanted to show, though, like I said, with the samples I gave you, those four pages, was just letting you know that these that were, say, sub-24, and I'll go to the first page right there, the first one I have highlighted. Originally, when the sale occurred, before we could go out and verify what all information of the sale, between going out and doing physical inspections, looking at MLS and any other information sources we could find, before we made any adjustments to that sale, we were at 27.82 ratio. We got it up to a 3141 based on, you know, whatever limited sales we had at that time. But if you take those and you take all the others, and some of these went from like 27 to a 44, you take all that, the .45 is not really, I mean, I'm really wanting to be mid-38 and a half, because I want it to reflect more of what we truly had. It just doesn't make any sense. Some of the other counties that were out there, actually for Department of, when they take their totality as a whole, were within reason, and had their CODs there, which is a coefficient of dispersion, I'm not gonna get too technical and geeky on that, but all their ratios and everything were perfect for what DOR would have. When the sample size came out, there were some counties that were 31s, 32s. Their coefficients of dispersions were way off the charts. I mean, they were basically, it was one county up in North Georgia, and they were at this meeting, and they failed on every category when it went through the Department of Audit study, yet they were perfect in their Department of Revenue study, which is taking the totality as a whole and only doing the look-back, which is what we're supposed to be doing. And so that's why I'm asking for the board to sign off and let me put this appeal into the Department of Audit's and have a talk with Mr. Thomas.
All right, any questions for Mr. George?
Yes.
Commissioner Hamburg?
Yes, ma'am.
When was this, is it Senate Bill?
Senate Bill 346, yes, ma'am.
But when was that passed?
That was in 2010. That was back when all the, everything was going on, and so they, the Georgia legislator put that together to start matching the sales to, at that time, ease some of the burden that was going on, and it's just been continuing to go. So some of, most of the time, used to, we probably matched over 50% at one point, just because sales were going so low at one point. Now, we're probably only matching about somewhere in the neighborhood of 15% because most of them are above where we're selling. So, but the Senate Bill 346, what it really did for these sales ratio studies is put the Department of Audit's at looking at it, instead of what we're supposed to do from January 1 to December 31 of the previous year to base the current, they're looking actually at three and six months, and it passed that, and that's not what we're basing our sales ratio study. We're not gonna forecast or try to crystal ball something. That's just not fair and not what was in the guidelines of what Department of Revenue requires.
I don't recall us ever having to do this since I've been aboard.
I know, one other time, Mr. McDaniel's, I know, did one time have some speaking, and I don't know formally if we had to appeal at that time, but this was back in 1314. There were some discussions, and somehow miraculously, everything took care of itself pretty easily, and we were good.
You need him back to do that magic trick again?
Actually, he's gonna be part of our team to, he's gonna be part of the Department of Audit's team coming in, and I welcome that because he knows exactly what we got going on, and I'm gonna use the exact same arguments that he used, except for now, I'm gonna turn it around and-
Let me make sure I heard you correctly. Did y'all hear that, Commissioner? How long is, once we make this vote today, and I'm hoping to appeal this?
Yes, ma'am.
What's the process? Will they be able to change it?
So the process is, we have until, and even though it falls on the holiday, we have till the 5th to do this. And the only reason I'm coming to you at this later date, and we had, as we were getting ready for assisting other departments with getting ready for the digest submission, and it's Commissioner Bassett's here, he'll tell you that we've got that approved, by the way. We've got, we had that, we had a few other things that were present, so as the staff was also trying to go through and plow back through and realize that, hey, all this is the stuff we've already supplied them, so it took us a few weeks to get to this point to come before. And also, the meeting last week with a lot of the chief appraisers was very helpful, because 96, 95 or 96 counties, 60% fell below 38%. No one's ever seen that number before, and that just speaks to the time adjustments are not reflective of what's going on with the growth that's happened in 2021. But just go back to your point, the, once we get this appealed, we have till Monday. Once that's appealed, they have 45 days to respond. So when I was talking to Mr. Thomas this morning, he says, once you get that in, him and his staff will get together and work on getting a time to come meet, look at our data, present anything they have, and we have that initial thing, and 98, 99% of the time, it will end there. It will, it will get rectified. There is an option that it could go that we would get an arbitrator, they would get an arbitrator, and there would be a third arbitrator to have it, but Mr. Thomas said, and, you know, because he's getting a lot of phone calls right now, they're looking back at a lot of stuff, so they should be coming with some other information, definitely wants to see everything that we have. So, you know, my question to him today was about his time adjustment. I wanted to know how he came up with that number, so we can then try to look at, if I did a time adjustment, my numbers are 6% off.
My concern is that we can be successful with the appeal, and that these numbers don't change, you know, we will not be penalized.
Right, that's the reason, we appeal this, I want to get it above the 38. I want it to be true. First and foremost, I want it above the 38, because that's where the threshold is for the 40% assessment ratios.
So are these numbers gonna go into effect before the appeal?
Yes, no, they'll go into, they'll go into effect before we can bill out utility notices. They'll want, they'll have all the appeals done before they send these final numbers to the state for Department, to Department of Revenue for what we can do that. So they have everything done well before, I think it's in November.
Because I, and I definitely wouldn't want it to have a negative effect with the school system with QBE and what else it may affect.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Any other questions? All right, if not, entertain a motion to approve. So moved. Is there a second?
I second.
Any other questions? Second by Commissioner Anderson. Any other questions?
Just for a point of clarification, I don't know whether there was actually the resolution that was read, so-
Okay, I'm sorry. Go ahead and read the resolution.
Okay, so Resolution 2022-187 is a resolution authorizing Clayton County to appeal the correctness of the equalized adjusted property tax digest to the state auditor to authorize the chairman or his designate to execute any and all documents relating thereto and to otherwise perform all acts necessary to accomplish the intent of this resolution to authorize the chief financial officer to amend the budget as needed to reflect an appropriate revenue source and expense to provide an effective date of this resolution and for other purposes.
All right, now, is there a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
I second.
Any other questions? Those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, issue unanimous. Thank you, Mr. George. Mr. Reed, next item.
All right, I think the second item on the agenda, if I understand right, is the resolution regarding the federal and state audit. Is that, I don't, is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. So I have Resolution 2022-186, which is a resolution authorizing Clayton County to request a federal and state audit into spending by Africa Children's Fund relating to its distribution of emergency rental assistance funds to direct the chief operating officer or his designate to execute any documents and to otherwise perform all acts necessary to accomplish the intent of this resolution to provide an effective date of this resolution and for other purposes.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
I second.
Any questions?
Why is this put on the emergency meeting agenda? I'm just curious, since we're supposed to be here for an emergency item.
I can't answer that other than a commissioner has a right to place an item on the agenda, but I don't think this rises to the level of emergency, but nonetheless, it's on the agenda. Any other questions?
I have some papers for everybody. I don't know how we're gonna do that. I guess, Mr. Allen, Officer Allen? I sent this an email to you all as well. Yes, everyone needs a copy. Dr. Anderson already has one. It'll just be both the commissioners and chairman and vice chair. And I actually sent it an email. So for a point of clarity, as early as this morning, I received several phone calls from even elected officials, and I think some of them are even in the audience, I saw them driving up today. Is the councilwoman here? Hi, how are you? But I didn't get a call from the councilwoman, but from another councilwoman and several others, and there's questions regarding the use of the funds. And when it comes to federal dollars, when there are questions that have arose as the ones that are constantly coming before us, as recently as of this morning, in particular with one person, where a councilwoman was on the phone with her and could not even get through the process and could barely get through, based upon this document that I've given everybody, it's specific, and this document, for those that are in the audience, you can find it online- you can find it online through ACCG. And one of the first things in the first paragraph is trustees. We are public officers of trustees and servants of the people and are at all times amenable to them. So the point is that we have to make sure that everything we do is in good standing with public trust, specifically when it comes to money. And so before I put this even on the agenda, I consulted not only with Mr. Reed, but also with several other attorneys who we all have membership to consult with. And it's because of the dollar amount and the questions that were surrounded it, surrounding it, and then the subsequent item on this agenda, that based upon the document that I've shared with you all, it is incumbent upon us as commissioners to be able to make them of notice, make these agencies of notice that they're having questions. Now, for me to put it on the agenda is simply for the board to be aware. But this id, this document specifically specifies that at any time that any individual within a board finds out that there are questions, that we're obligated to make them aware. So bringing this before the board is just for us to all be aware of it, and hopefully, we can be able to make sure that we don't put ourselves in a predicament where we are not getting additional funding in the future. And you know what? One thing about audit, as we just talked about, we want to make sure that everything is in order and that they know that we're doing our part because of the questions raised. The last thing I want to say, and I just want to make sure that I read this, because I got it specifically from the last few emails that I received. And that was an educator, as I stated before, who had received, who had asked for help and was not able to get help or any answers. I know the person said they got eight cell phones now. I also received a call as of recently of a mother, and she called me twice. And she said that when she contacted the agency, she was not able to get to where she needed to be. And then the coach actually even contacted me, and this is the mother of a group of children who are deemed to be stellar students in our school system. And then finally, the last email that I received, which I think is poignant, and I did forward this to the entire board, that email read that it was sent over to COO and others, where we have a homeowner in our county, a citizen, who owns several pieces of property and lives in at least one of those properties. He said he's gone through all the processes that have been provided through the system, but yet and still, he's yet to hear back. And just while I was sitting on this dais today, I received an additional email and, as I stated, a call from those that are elected. So as you can see, based upon this document, for those that want to see it, you can have it, it's online. This is before the board so that we could just do our part prayerfully and hopefully collectively, collectively as a majority. But if not, we all have a duty to be able to make sure we're in a right standing.
Any other questions, comments?
With a organization that is distributing money on behalf of the county, don't we keep reported records of that with our accounting department, our finance?
And I believe we also have a right to audit at any time.
Correct.
And do conduct audits.
I'm just curious, do we have that report?
That I could not tell you offhand, or when the last time they were audited.
I know when we took the vote, there was no financial information given.
That's all right.
And based upon this document, that should have been provided, and there was none.
Any other questions, comments?
I have a question. How do we get, well, I know we're going to audit. Just, I guess with this company, with the African Children's Fund, how do we get, I want to see what they've done so far as far as, not just with the audit, but an immediate feedback of who they've given money to for rental assistance and things of that nature. I want immediate feedback. I know you asked for the audit, but I'd like to see what they've done as of now.
That actually will come up. Some of that information will come to you in a minute when I talk about the emergency rental system program issue.
All right, any other questions in reference to this? All right, those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Nay. Four, one, it passes.
Next.
All right, the next issue was a discussion item on the Africa Children's Fund Emergency Rental Assistance Program agreements. And so, very briefly, the four items that I'll discuss is basically the outline of the question, timeline of events relating to Africa Children's Fund, discussion of those issues, and then offer questions. So the question presented is whether the agreement with Africa Children's Fund is ultra virus based on a conflict of interest. And I, the reason for the asterisks will be apparent later. So in order to start to answer that question first, we have to understand what is ultra virus? Blacks Law Dictionary defines it as a body exercising an invalid excess of power or authority, of authority, I should say. Or another definition, again, from Blacks Law Dictionary, is that it's an act outside one's jurisdiction or a financial action that's not covered legally under a company's laws. So, so what is this board's authority? And some of this is very elementary, but I'm providing this for context of the public as well. Broadly speaking, Section two dash ten A fifteen says that the county has, or this board has authority to exercise all powers that are vested in county governing authorities. Section, I'm sorry, OCGA thirty-six-ten-one states that as it relates to contracts, and that's really what I'm focused on is relating to the contracts, is that contracts entered into by the county governing authority with other persons on behalf of the county shall be in writing and entered on its minutes. Again, the board must meet in the open and take votes in public under the Open Meetings Act. Again, that's the language right there. Shall be taken after due notice of the meeting and in compliance with the posting and agenda requirements of the chapter. Section B, B two states that any resolution that's not made at a meeting, which, or made at a meeting that's not open to the public is not binding. The board has to exercise its authority in matters in which it has lawful authority. For example, the Constitution, Section nine, paragraph, I'm sorry, Article nine, Section two, Paragraph one C, limits home rule powers of the county. None of these really are at issue, but because I referenced it, I wanted to let you know what they are. Actions affecting elective county offices, affecting the form composition, compensation of members of the county governing authority, defining any criminal offense or providing for criminal punishment, adopting any form of taxation beyond that authorized by law, exercising power over the Georgia Public Service Commission, affecting the power of eminent domain, or affecting any court or personnel or action affecting the public school system. Those are basically things that are listed that this court, this board does not have authority to affect. Also, the count, the board cannot enter to contracts which are effective beyond the terms of the commissioners then in office, generally, generally speaking. In other words, that they're binding on successive administration, and that's a case that talks about that principle. In addition, as it relates to ERA funds, the Treasury Department issued several frequently asked questions. The one that is at issue here, number twenty-nine, provides that the acceptable limitations on administrative expenses for ERA one funds is no more than ten percent of the amount paid to the grantee. And in this case, the grantee is the county. Under ERA two, it's not more than fifteen percent paid to a grantee. Again, the board's governed procedurally by Roberts Rules of Order, but under Section two dash thirty-six. And the basic steps to approve a motion, of course, you know, is a motion, a second, and a majority vote in favor. A citation there for Roberts Rules. So in short, the board properly exercises its contractual power in an open meeting where the vote is public, the contract is presented in the minutes, its approval is by a majority vote after a motion and second, and in an area where it has the authority to act. So if any of these conditions are not present, there's an argument that can be made that the board has acted outside of its power. Now, resolution of factual issues involving conflict of interests, that's governed by Chapter seventy, which is the Board Ethics Code. Those two sections says that the Board of Ethics has to hear evidence as to whether there is a violation of the Ethics Code. And if so, they notify the Board of Commissioners and the accused official within five days of his decision. So as it relates to the conflict of issue, conflict of interest issue, I'm not going to talk about that because that's outside this board's authority. That would have to come at a later or through the Board of Ethics if there is findings in that regard. So let me speak to the timeline of the, of the ERAP approval. So this is stat, attached spreadsheet shows basically what programs were used for rental assistance. The first one, ACF is for Africa Children's Fund. In December twenty-twenty, they had an informal bid where they received seventy-four thousand, two hundred and fifty dollars in administrative costs to disperse one million dollars. Again, that's outside, just to give you sake of context. As it relates to ERA funds, in July of twenty-twenty-one, through Resolution twenty-two-one-one-fifteen, this board authorized a four hundred dollar administrative fee.
Four hundred or four hundred thousand?
I'm sorry, what did I say? Four hundred dollars?
Four hundred thousand.
That was a deal then, four hundred.
I know, that's right. Four hundred thousand dollars in administrative funds for their dispersment of rental assistance funds received through ERA. There was two, two parts that were given to them, one in July, again, another in November, the total being five point eight million dollars in administrative percentage. Again, as on the far right hand, is six point eight percent of the total amount that they distributed. The next one, H two N is for Hearts to Nurish. That was under ERA one. You see those numbers there. I'm not going to deal with that because that's not what is at issue. The last one, G Men and ACF, there was a reallocation of ERA one money from the state. And you see the breakdown of numbers there. G Men, that company received six million, ACF received two point one. You see the administrative costs there. Overall, out of that eight point one million dollars that the grantee, meaning the county, received, nine point eight nine percent of that went to administrative costs. So, again, IFQ twenty-one forty-seven, that is the one that I mentioned, let me go back. The middle one, ERA two A and B, that informal quote, that was approved by the board on July sixth, twenty-twenty-one. The motion, I tried to get a copy of the minutes unless you see that, but my technical skills, I guess, weren't up to par, so I just have to type it out to you. So the motion was made by Chairman Turner, seconded by Commissioner Davis, motion passed four oh. The notes in that say that Commissioner Franklin abstained due to lack of information to vote on the item. Due to the official rules, the vote tally must count this initial abstention.
Twenty-one or twenty-two?
Two.
No, this was IFQ twenty-twenty-one. So it was initial A F, ERA two. This is what, this is what was there. Then last month, there was a special purchase, twenty-two-two-one-seventy-eight, was approved by the board on July nineteenth. Motion was made by Commissioner Davis, seconded by Chairman Turner, motion passed three to one. The nay was Commissioner Franklin. Commissioner Anderson was absent. That motion was for four hundred and five thousand dollars for program administration fees to allocate up to nine million dollars in ERA program funds. So both agreements were approved in an open meeting where the vote was public. The contracts for both of those items were presented in the minutes, and that approval was by majority vote after a motion and a second. And again, the area where you have authority is that you, the board could approve administrative costs up to ten percent for ERA one, fifteen percent for ERA two. And so as the grantee of the ERA P funds, the county did not expend more than ten percent of ERA one on administrative expenses or more than fifteen percent of ERA two funds on administrative expenses. So you see, I just cut those two areas. Total for ERA, DCL allocation was nine point eight nine percent. The total for ERA two funds was actually six point eight percent. And then the, both ERA one and ERA two funds were dispersed by the county after a court order or other judicial process. And the reason why I wanted to bring that up is that there, the money that was given was not given to Africa Children's Fund for them to disperse. And so I'm going to bring Chief Magistrate Judge Wright Hill, and she can talk a little bit more about the process of once judicial process entered, what happened when Africa Children's Fund received that information.
Wait one second before, because I don't want to get the judge involved in the funding amount because the last meeting, again, we did not get any financial information. And what you're presenting to us right now is contradictory to what we shared with us. It was, we're at, I think it was like four or five percent. But what we're looking at is, you're showing six point eight and nine percent, even though it's still below the threshold, it still goes back to, we've got to have accurate information for us to even make decisions. So I think that that's something to note. I'm glad that you also brought up about the ultra virus, and I hear what you're saying about having to go before the, the Ethics Board. But one of the things I want everybody to keep in mind is that we're talking about federal dollars. And where, yes, as you and I have discussed and I've discussed with the state attorneys as well, it does fall back on our county and what our roles are and what our enabling is. But the one thing I could share with you of certain, because I had another state meeting before this meeting, is that the federal government, they look at their requirements only. And when there are questions that are made, then we have to answer to those set questions. And so the problem that I have, and I want to be very clear on this for me, is technically, as we discussed the Roberts Rules of Order and I gave out this document, we are bound by commissioners to even state if there is a conflict of interest. That was not stated, number one. Number two, the other area of concern for me, and as I look at even case law, OCGA sixteen dash ten dash six, where a local governmental body in twenty-twelve purchased, did the same thing, and they actually knew, but they knew of the interest of the board member. But because it was, because it did not impair, in fact, provided more protection against any conflicts. But the problem with that is, we're talking about a smaller round of purchase, we're not talking about federal funds. We're not just going against our enabling and our rules and our ethics. We're going against the fact that these are nine million dollars of federal funds, and what was presented to this board was nothing. And what was presented to the board verbally is inaccurate based upon what you told us already. And of most concern to me is that there were questions raised during that meeting. And there was actually, as you stated, the second of that motion by our very own chair, who did not divulge that, who has an obligation based upon this document that we all go by in our oath of office to divulge that to the board and for us to find out later. And then not only did he second the motion, but he steered that vote by stating, and I quote, "I have worked with them and I have full confidence." To be able to do that when we're talking about federal dollars, I want to put it on record, I think it's very problematic. And I can tell you that others see it as well. Now, hopefully, we can get beyond this and people will continue to get the help once we get these audits. But at the end of the day, we got to be able to apply for other financial funding, federal funding. And I know for a fact that there are, we've had to deal with it here on the state level. We had to send money back because we didn't follow certain guidelines. We thought we did, but the state came back to us and said, we need our money back. So that's why I am urging this board to take this into consideration, which unfortunately doesn't necessarily involve the judge. This is, this is for us as a board.
Well, before you speak, Mr. Chair, the reason why it's important to understand how the money was used is that if this money went to Africa Children's Fund and they were responsible for dispersing it, that's a different story than if the county is dispersing money that is through a judicial process.
I caused you to pause because we were on that call, Mr. ...
Please, please let him finish.
And so, the factual issue as to whether there is an ethical, I'm not speaking to that. I'm speaking only to this board's authority to enter into a contract with a vendor for administrative services, which is what this vendor did. This vendor did not disperse money to people. This vendor only provided administrative services. And so to bring the judge to speak more to how that process worked goes back to Commissioner Anderson's request as to, well, who was being helped that speaking? And that's why I wanted to wait until we presented that, to have her speak to that particular issue.
Okay, I'll wait here. Can I get Mr. Stanford to come up here, please? And now the judge can. I was on that call, and the problem that we had, and please correct me if I'm wrong, because we were doing a lot of moving parts at the time. So honestly, a lot of moving parts, and I was on that call. And part of the challenge that the ERAP, ERAP money calls for all jurisdictions is that... is that a judge does not have the ability to disperse funds. We had to call in a third party. So, I hear what you're saying, but at the same token, it was discussed that we had to have a third party to do it. So, that whole caveat is a judge dispersed it? A judge has to be neutral at all times. How can they disperse? They can grant a judgment, but the, the, the way that had to read and the way we sat on the phone with our clerk of courts, who, um, who was also a constitutional officer on that call, and I asked the question, "Do we have to do it this way?" Well, yes, we're basing it on Gwinnett County. And yes, this is what we're going to have to do because else we could fall into the area of gratuity. So, we got to be very careful talking about a judge dispersing funds. So, please, if you can, just bring clarity to that.
So, commissioners, referring specifically when we start onboarding this process, we took the model from Gwinnett. Gwinnett was working with Georgia Appicidae, and they was working through their magistrate court as a, as a proxy for the work. I think that the delineation that we're making here is that the process from the judicial order is being facilitated through the courts. The county is the one that's distributing the funds, though. That's the difference. So, it's the county that's actually taking in the funds. Once the judicial order go out, the checks are being distributed through the county, even though the process is being facilitated through the courts, working in conjunction with finance, um, OPM, or these other departments to assist us to ensure that the money is going back out to the respective citizens. That's the difference.
Okay, so we got that, Mr. Reed? She can't give money?
All right, well, go ahead, Mr. Reed.
I don't think I said she gave money. I said that the county issued money, that the judge has an order that dictates how we did, the difference between the county being the grantee and then issuing it to a sub-grantee, for instance, or a sub-recipient, for them to disperse the money. That's not what happened here. The county was the grantee and the sole disperser of money. But that dispers, that dispersal of money was pursuant to judicial order, so.
Mr. Reed, when I ask, I want to break down who got the money. Yeah, I'm talking about every person.
And that's what, we're, we're going to hear from Judge Hill.
I mean, every person.
We're going to hear from Judge Hill, but let me also say this.
And we should have got this before them too, as well, y'all.
Commissioner Anderson.
Okay.
Uh, let me, let me say this. And I know it doesn't fit into Commissioner Franklin's narrative or agenda, but I'm going to say it once again. I have no affiliation, I never sat on the, any advisory board or on the board of the African Children's Fund. And the old adage goes, can't always believe what you read. So, if proper due diligence and research was done, then people would know that. So, I just want to make it absolutely clear to everyone that I did not divulge any relationship because there was none. If I'm guilty of supporting the organization, then yeah, I'm guilty of supporting organizations. Because anybody who does great and good work in Clayton County and help our citizens, I'm going to be supportive of that organization. So, I just want to make sure that I said that. Judge Hill.
Mr. Chair, as you're saying that, I think it's important for us to understand that the board received, and we all witnessed, and I hear what you're saying, because I know things could happen. And we received information from citizens, and I think I've seen a couple in the audience, asking about it. And again, I gave you all this document, and your name actually was on the um website, particularly as a board member, even though it stated the type of board, a board member. So, again, just the last thing I'm going to say, as I had my consultation even as early as this morning, with those um who we all have access to and a member to, we need to err on the side of caution because at the time of the vote, your name was listed as the board member. I don't want it to go out as if it's something that we just made up. No, every one of us received that inquiry, including yourself.
Absolutely. But again, to that, in that same vein, Mr. or Dr. Mbabwa explained to everyone that that was in error or a mistake. And there is no documents outside of that, board men, meeting minutes or anything else that has my name anywhere on it. But I'll digress from there.
Thank you for that.
Looking at number three, that's what this is about. It's not about the process, which we're looking at, process versus something else. It just says, is this contract, uh, should it be void because of ultra virus? That is what this is about.
Well, Mr. Reed made it clear as to where our authority lies, but Commissioner, I mean, I'm sorry, uh, Judge Hill.
Good afternoon. Um, what I have done was prepared for the commissioners of, this is the report that um African Children's Fund provides to the court. They um provide this document as far as the dispersments that have went out, um, the federal funding. This starts the July fourteenth, and we try to have it updated on a weekly basis. It has the date, the total amount um of monies that have been dispersed for that week, the number of checks, which would correspond with the number of um cases that would have been dismissed, because each case has a case number, but then I asked them to, to, in addition to that, to get the total of the household. So, I may dismiss one case, but if there's a husband or wife and three kids, it has an impact to five um people. So, if you can look at that, this is from July, and I think the last um update was from dispersments of August seventeenth, showing that the six million, over six million dollars was dispersed. Um, the, the amount on the last page, the one million that is added to it to get the total of seven thousand, that one mil, that first million um was the county funds. If you look in the comment section, where you see a couple of um references to apartment complexes, this is when um African Children's Fund went out to um various apartment complexes and, and spoke with the property managers. There were issues with some people may not have any transportation. Um, and so, they went to the properties to do the same thing that they do um in the courts. They're at the courts um four to five times days a week, and that's because they have court files. So, we can't release hundreds and hundreds of court files out, so we have them come in. In addition to that, the dispersments are done in the courts. Um, what, I also asked them to prepare, um, this is a document of all of the dispersments of federal funds. And you could scroll through. I would have printed it out, but it's four hundred pages. So, I'm more than happy to email it and keep scrolling, but um it gives the, the person's name, it gives their uh neighborly ID number, it shows that it's closed, um, the amount that was dispersed. If you click on uh accomplishments, I believe, I think they have went in and did um demographics um as far as gender, race, ethnicity, as such. So, I'm more than happy to email um this to the commissioners again because it's four hundred pages worth of um information. I don't want to kill all of those trees to get this information to you.
Can I ask why this is up, that we hide column B of folks' names up there, just for?
Thank you. If you could, um, there's another--
Thank you for that, but unfortunately, all of this is public information. At the end of the day, because it's not giving no date of birth, this is, because it's public and federal dollars.
It is.
Thank you, Judge.
I wasn't finished. I just had one more statement to make.
Oh, no.
Um, there's another document. Uh, what did you just show, the settlement? And there it is. If you could scroll down, this is what we produced, the settlement agreement um between the parties, which states what the amount is owed, and stop right there, that paragraph right there. What is owed, so it may be sixty-five hundred dollars. The case managers are able to negotiate. They may um negotiate an amount of six thousand, so there's a difference of five hundred dollars. This paragraph right here is what I've um put in place so that both parties are aware and understand that the settlement amount, it resolves that, that um, the total amount is owed, that the landlord cannot come back after the tenant for the difference. Um, any attempt to do that, they will be dismissed. They can't take legal action to try to so, sue, so, sue them for that same amount because that would be fraud. Um, and if you could scroll down a little bit further, it shows the, where the landlord and the tenant um sign off on that. I believe there's one more document below that, and it's notarized. And there's also a plaintiff's affidavit stating that they're the landlord, they own the property, what the total amount was owed, um, the settlement amount, and that they understand that those documents are then filed um with the court, once it's been signed and notarized, the af, the plaintiff's affidavit, the settlement agreement, and then I dismiss and sign the dismissal order. I have signed off on all of the dismissals. So, if you pull up those case numbers, which are public record, and you see a dismissal, and you pull up the document, you'll see that the cases which were Clayton County evictions were dismissed as a result of the monies received from the federal funds.
Thank you. Any questions for the judge?
Thank you for this information. I wish we would have had it, and it would have helped commissioners have a better understanding when we made the vote earlier. Uh, but the only thing I will say, Judge, with the information you've provided, I think the question still remains, again, because of the feedback I'm getting. I don't know if any other commissioner is getting feedback. Um, I have a gentleman that said that you all did do your job, but he's still awaiting to hear back from folks on the African Children's Fund to settle everything out. I have that email right now as early as, what was it, yesterday or the day before we sent that over to you all?
Well, Commissioner Franklin, all I can say is that if that information is given to me, then I will um work on it as I've done every time I've gotten a call or an email.
That you have. But we shouldn't have to do that, is what I'm saying. And you shouldn't have to do that.
I understand.
So, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Reed, you got something else?
No, I think that was probably my last slide. Um, the, the main point, and I think it may have been in that last bullet point, was that, again, uh, as the judge alluded, this, she did not say that she took this order and gave it to African Children's Fund for them to do anything with it. Once that order was signed, it was done through county finance. So, really, the part that we're talking about, um, that is at issue are those monies that were given to them through the contract that the county had with them for roughly eight hundred and five thousand or something like that, if I recall off the top of my head. So, um, that was the actual money that the county gave directly to African Children's Fund for, out of the ERA one and ERA two funds. And, and then I, I am also available for any questions if you have on that.
Any questions?
I just want to make sure I heard you correctly. So, give the judgment, the county finance gives that money to Africa Children's Fund to complete what has the judgment process, because we can't cut checks directly to people. So, we cut that amount to the Africa Children's Fund, is that correct? And then, it's incumbent upon the African Children's Fund to complete the process, is that true?
Good morning. Um, so, the process is when we get the um downloaded information from African Children's Fund, um, we actually pay the landlords directly through county finance.
Okay, wonderful.
So, they never touch the money?
No. The only money they get is the administration fee.
So, they get administration fee, but we're cutting the check?
We are cutting the checks. So, they're processing all of the applications.
So, what, what do you do?
Really long, now.
Excuse me?
So, what does an administrator do to get an administrative fee?
They are working through the system neighborly to process all the applications and going through all the documents for the approval process.
Just same as Hearts to Nurish.
Yes, same thing, same system.
I don't--
So, African Children's Fund never touches money.
No, sir.
The money is, the, the applications are processed through their office, comes to the judge, they evaluate it, and then, once the decision's been made, goes to finance. Finance cuts the check, and check is given directly to--
To the landlords.
The landlords.
Correct.
You have something, Mr. uh, yes, Stanford?
Just to, just to simplify, the third-party administrator is responsible for taking care of all of the processing. So, they're working directly with the clients to get the details. Once that information is provided, in this particular case, the judge is responsible for signing off on, ensure that all parties are, are clear about responsibility moving forward. Once that order is signed off on, um, African Children's Fund does not provide any checks, provide any funding directly to those individuals. That information is processed through our finance department to those individuals. Proper processing is, is really the gist of it. And so, commissioner was asking specifically, well, why do we have a third-party administrator? They're going back and forth with regard to the application process, making sure that they qualify, to make sure that there is somebody in the, in, certainly as the intermediary between the, the two parties, the, the African Children's Fund or whoever that third-party administrator is responsible for that, that respective discussion with the respective client.
So, what does our office of--
Informant management.
So, what do they do?
OPM is not, they're dealing with, so she, the judge is dealing with, as we considered, the, the judicial orders, those individuals in the dispossessionary process. They're dealing with individuals that might be in eviction process, but it's in the need of funding. So, there's a call center associated with the non-judicial orders that OPM and that staff is dealing with.
It's pre-eviction. So, front, there are some people that may be behind three, four, five months. We don't handle that, so that's handled through OPM and G, um, G-Men. So, that's pre-eviction. And so, they may need assistance so an eviction isn't filed. So, they handle that. We handle once an eviction has been filed. And as far as what they do, just like they said, um, they make sure they have all the documentation, um, proof of COVID and all of that, make sure they have the lease. They negotiate, which helps stretch the monies we have to negotiate um the settlement amount. So, they might be owed sixty-five hundred, but if we can negotiate less, then that's more, then we can spread the money out. They negotiate that, they make sure everything is in order. So, then, by the time it gets to me, I'm just signing off on the dismissal. So, they're doing all that case management. The same thing Hearts to Nurish was doing, except Hearts to Nurish was doing it for eviction, and they're doing it after eviction. And, and African Children's Fund has to handle any that might have started pre-eviction, but now, because so much time has taken place, and um a landlord has filed, they're now in eviction status.
I, I get with you after, because I still want to know the difference between--
The offices.
Yes.
I think that that's the confusion too, um, to, to Madam Vice Chair's point. Uh, and commissioners, don't let me be the only one saying I'm getting these calls. Y'all getting calls about people not getting responses back?
I said it way back.
But, you know, for today's conversation, the reason I'm asking. And I think that the explanation from the judge is wonderful, but I believe that, I, I know I have even more questions now. So, it does go back to when we get these calls from folks saying they can't get a hold of these people, which we heard in the last meeting, that they, I think they have eight cell phones now. So, they said that shouldn't be a problem moving forward. So, the problem still remains. It's not you or, so the problem for me is still evident. So, I'm glad that we voted to do the audit, so we can all be comfortable that we are doing our part to ensure that the monies are getting exactly to those who need it and not delayed, not on you all part, not on the county part, but we got folks who are saying, "I, I can't get my documents. They're not calling me back." My phone blows up with these complaints. And we got four people in OPM office, and in fact, one of them said that they called that office, and the person gave them Mr. Mbabwa's number. And I want to say it was even Commissioner, um, oh, I mean, not Commissioner, I'm sorry, I made her Commissioner. It was Councilwoman Dona Saur even as early as this morning. She said she was going to try to come to the meeting. She's been trying to help a family, and she could not even get through to Mr. Mbabwa. She talked to them, and that she got nowhere. And so, it's not just us, because we're the conduits. Again, I read it. We are trustees of the public dollar, so the question still remains. So, thank you. Thank you for your presentation.
Can we call a question?
Glad for the audit. But there's no question, really. There's no question or call.
Or is there any further action we need to take?
No, but I believe this topic was just a discussion on whether it's ultra virus.
All right. No other business for this board at this time. I entertain a motion to adjourn.
No, you put on the agenda for public comment.
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry. Thank you for uh, public comment at this time. Anybody would like to come and speak in reference to any of the items that was on the agenda?
I think I will--
Come forward, please. And sir, you have two minutes to do so, and always keep in mind our civility clause.
Madam Clerk, Mickey Garber, Unincorporated, Rex, Georgia. I think it's, it's very important that you're protecting public dollars for the taxpayers' money. Now, as I understand these procedures-- Now, as I understand these procedures, Chairman Turner, you didn't underwrite anybody. You're not, there's just a misprint in the paper. As I see the money being dispersed and the administrative fee, I see there has to be somebody going out there to do the work, to get organized, the people who actually need help, and run through the paperwork. That is where, as I see it, as taxpayer, that it's very reasonable to me that, that these administrative people are the people that, that the people who actually need to help file with. Then the judge over here, their rent is due, and she is the go-between, between the landlords who are putting these people at default and being thrown out on the street. Now, we, we don't need people out on the street, but the landlord needs to be paid. And so that's where her office is, is involved with this. Her office is involved with this, but she isn't doing any accounting work or not able to do accounting work. The best people to do the accounting work is the finance department, of which they are most able to do this. I'm glad y'all worked through this and made it available for the taxpayer person to see this. Thank you for your time and the opportunity to speak to this issue.
Thank you. Anybody else like to speak?
Madam Clerk, Pat Sebohan, City Council, Jonesboro, Chair, Commissioners. Actually, what I'd like to speak to in regards to the, the funding, I don't know if Councilwoman Sardar was going to speak basically on the same issue I was. So I don't know. I haven't talked to her this morning. But it was a situation in regards to a homeless individual that Drew Andrews and I, along with Regina Deloach, we were trying to assist someone in the city of Jonesboro. The problem, one of the biggest problems that we ran into was, number one, the application process. It was, it's just so lengthy for someone to try to get through the application process, and especially if they're homeless. And another issue that we had, I wanted to know who vets these locations, because the address that I was given for the African Children's Fund was a trailer park in Riverdale. I was sent to the trailer park, along with the gentleman that we were trying to assist, only to find a trailer that was pretty disgusting. And the lady that met us there, Diane, through, and I talked to Dr. Shalonda Smith, I was told that she was going to rent two rooms to them in her trailer that she was living in at $600 per room for a month. And so that's what I was wondering, where that fund is coming from? I mean, who vets these places? And needless to say, we did not use it. I just told the gentleman that we would have to find another location for him. It just wasn't a good place for them to be. And so that's why I was curious as to who vets these locations.
Thank you. Your time is up.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Ma'am?
Thank you, Madam Councilwoman, because that was one of the reasons I voted nay. I pulled up the address during the vote. I think it's between my district and the district.
Good afternoon, Council Chairperson. My name is Rose Hall. I'm a Commissioner on the Housing Authority of Clayton County. For some reason, Clayton County Housing Authority is left out of the loop. My reason for getting, and I'm a little nervous because I don't kind of get up and speak, but my reason for getting on the board is because of my experience. I worked for the Atlanta Housing Authority for 34 years. So a lot of this, these things you are talking about, I already know. But I'm real concerned that, and there's some challenges at the Housing Authority that we're working on, but I don't feel that we're doing enough to help the people in Clayton County. So I wanted to say I have some concerns, and I think someone should look at the Housing Authority and see if we can participate and be a part of it. I wasn't going to say anything, but it's on my heart. I had to get up and say it. So please, consider us. It's a lot going on, and I know it, but we are there to serve also.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you for your service, Ms. Hall.
Anybody else like to speak?
I just wanted to address just briefly, oh, sorry, Keisha Wright Hill. I reside in Jonesboro. I just wanted to address just briefly the last comment. I have been approached by Denise Ziegler from the Clayton County Housing Authority. And we actually, the magistrate court does forward cases, pending eviction cases to the Clayton County Housing Authority in instances where there's not a COVID issue, because our federal funds only cover COVID. And so I just wanted to address that, that we are working with the Housing Authority as far as trying to assist others that may not qualify for the federal funding that we have.
Thank you for that additional information. Anybody else like to speak? If not, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. So move. Motion made by Commissioner Anderson, second by Commissioner Franklin. Those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, it's unanimous.